All right, welcome everybody to November, to the November eighth, twenty twenty one, public hearings on the Planning Commission on, we're Hillsborough County first, comprehensive plan amendments. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation is encouraged. To minimize, to minimize feedback in the audio, all participants in the meeting will be muted until it is their opportunity to speak. Planning Commissioners should raise their hand or unmute themselves and turn on their camera to indicate that they would like to speak. Please be sure to state your name at the beginning of your remarks for the benefit of the clerk. There will be an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments. When your name is called, you will be unmuted when it is your turn to speak. Please wait until the chair calls on you to begin speaking. State your name at the beginning of your comments and adhere to the time limits. If anyone has difficulties or is watching via HTV and would like to provide comments to be included in the record for local government hearing, please email them to planner@plancom.org. That's planner@plancom.org. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a fifteen minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a fifteen minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three minute period for rebuttal response. Planning Commissioners will then ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, a second and discussion of vote will be taken. With that, I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and call roll.
Good evening Bernstein.
Here.
Cardenas.
Here.
Dickerson. Dickerson.
Here.
Dix.
Here.
Andy.
Here.
Chris.
Here.
Linkus.
Here.
Moreno.
Here.
Powell.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Joseph.
Here.
Thank you. You have a call.
Thank you. All right. Our first item is item number two, action item Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Amendment, HCCPA twenty one sixteen, Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment, Mobility Section. And the presenters are Katrina Corcoran and Rich Clarendon.
Good evening Planning Commissioners. One moment, I'll share my screen. And you should be seeing the full screen presentation now. Great, thank you. Good evening Commissioners. My name is Katrina Corcoran, Planning Commission staff. I'm presenting the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, HCCPA twenty one sixteen, Mobility Section Text Amendment. Rich Clarendon is my co-lead on this update as well. He is on the call. However, I will be giving the presentation and Rich will be joining me to answer questions. This is an action item and a resolution is provided for your vote. Some background of the Mobility Section. This is currently the adopted transportation element. It is part of the Community and Built Environment Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan. There has been extensive collaboration on this language for the Mobility Section. We've had a working group process which included staff from Plan Hillsborough, Hillsborough County, including Public Works and Community and Infrastructure Planning, Heart, and other staff based on topic area. Commissioners, there have been a number of revisions since the September briefing. We wanted to point these out, including new language on tolling, utilities and maintenance, evacuation and sheltering during emergencies, connectivity, development impacts on the multimodal transportation network, and transportation demand management, or TDM, strategies for employers. There's also been a number of clarifying edits and minor wordsmithing. All of those policies are listed each of your packet in the beginning memo. Due to the added connectivity goal, there has been a number of policies that have been renumbered. I also wanted to note that there was a supplemental strike through an underlying document provided to the Planning Commissioners this afternoon. It is, those changes are noted in the draft language in the adopted order crosswalk. However, that strike through underline is provided to make it clear where policies will be struck and replaced with reserved, reserved numbering. And those are policies from the future land use element and the intergovernmental coordination element that are included within the Mobility Section Text Amendment. The Mobility Section Amendment updates and replaces the existing transportation element, adds new definitions, and modifies transportation-related policy and tables in the capital improvements element. It also deletes duplicative language and the future land use and economically disadvantaged groups elements, in addition to modifying the language that I mentioned previously. We have seven main goals, which I'll be going over in more detail in the following slides. We have an implementation and monitoring section, which will be updated. This is a non-adopted reference page for implementation-focused documents from the county, as well as an assessment of conditions, which is an update of the mapping inventory. There are three, notably three maps that will be adopted as a part of this amendment. That includes the Quarter Preservation Plan map, the Transit Rightway Preservation Map, and the Context Classification map. The rest of the maps in the map series are proposed to not be adopted. Our first goal is to achieve equitable outcomes, and it reads to build a transportation system that supports the needs of all users with respect to ability, resources, identity, and mode preference. Our objectives include engaging the public, considering both positive and negative impacts of transportation projects, and recognizing and avoiding repeating passing justices. Our second goal is to achieve Vision Zero by providing a multimodal transportation system that prioritizes the safety of all roadway users. Our objectives here include using an integrated safe system, protecting vulnerable users, assisting in equitable education and fair enforcement of traffic laws, and improving high injury corridors. Our third goal is to maintain the system in good repair, preserve assets, and improve resiliency to climate change. This includes maintaining existing transportation infrastructure while repairing or replacing deficient facilities, supporting the maintenance of public transportation assets, and maintaining or improving the capability of the multimodal system to evacuate vulnerable populations. I'll note that this third objective is required by state statute. Our fourth goal is to promote connectivity, and it reads to provide safe and convenient connections within the transportation network that support multimodal access to key destinations, such as community focal points, employment centers, and services throughout the county. Our objectives here include designing communities around a grid network and improving interconnections between neighborhoods and surrounding neighborhood serving uses, as well as updating the Quarter Preservation Plan and ensuring adequate multimodal corridors. Commissioners, I'll note with this goal, this is a new goal that was added since the briefing in September. The first objective has some new policy language that was included as a part of this update, and the second objective was moved from what is now Goal Five into this new goal. Our fifth goal is to provide choices when not driving, and it reads to create a sustainable transportation system that allows people to take their mode of choice to access necessities, opportunities, recreation, and each other. Our objectives include balancing vehicular capacity with other outcomes, establishing and maintaining multimodal level of service standards, new developments impact on the multimodal network mitigating its impact on the multimodal network, supporting and collaborating Heart to increase frequency to higher density and intensity areas in transportation disadvantaged communities, and building a comprehensive bicycle and pedestrian system. Our sixth goal is to build a smart system that utilizes technology and strategies to improve safety, efficiency, and reliability for all modes of transportation and to meet the needs of all users. Our objectives here including, include addressing deficient roadways, modernizing the county's traffic management center, utilizing transportation demand management, or TDM, strategies, implementing parking for bicycles and shared vehicles, as well as curb space management, pursuing corridor widening strategically, improving multimodal connections to various destinations, and monitoring and supporting emerging technologies. Our seventh and final goal is to ensure compatibility with context. And it reads to provide a multimodal transportation system that supports planned future land use, respects historical and cultural assets, supports the identity of the surrounding community, and protects the natural environment. Our objectives here include designing roadways appropriate to the future land use category that they traverse, and that is notably related to the context classification definitions in MAP. I can draw your attention to the graphic on the far right of the slide. This context classification is looking at new or existing roadways based on the surrounding land use, whether that's rural, suburban, or urban, and designing appropriately based on those land uses. We also have objectives on minimizing adverse impacts to neighborhoods and environmentally sensitive land, protecting neighborhoods from adverse impacts of traffic and speeds while also providing reasonable access, and finally constructing complete streets. As I mentioned in the previous slide, the text amendment also involves the context classification. This slide shows the context classification map, which is also included within your packet. We will add an implementation and monitoring section, which will act as a non-adopted reference page to implementation documents as they become available from the county. That includes the Complete Streets Guidebook, Transportation Design Manual, and Transportation Technical Manual, as well as supplemental documents from the Quarter Preservation Plan Update. We've had a number of stakeholder and public engagement activities for the Mobility Section. In mid-August, we had newsletter articles, social media outreach, our project page was published, and we provided an initial draft of the Mobility Section language. Public comment was available online starting in August through mid-October. We did extend that period from the end of September until mid-October to ensure that everyone in the community had a chance to review and provide comment. I'll note that we had thirteen public comments provided, and those are also available in your packet and available online. We had two virtual public meetings on September ninth and twenty-third at staggered times in the day to accommodate varying schedules. We also presented to several groups as listed here in August through October. The final version of this section reflects outreach as well as input from the Planning Commission and the BOCC. No objections were received from reviewing agencies. We did receive comments from Hillsborough County, Hillsborough County Public Schools, which noted that they had no objection, and the Center for Urban Transportation Research, or COTR. Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office responded with no comments. For next steps, on December sixteenth, the amendment will go in front of the BOCC for the transmittal public hearing. Should they choose to transmit, in December through January, there will be a formal state and regional agency review and comment period. Following that, on February seventeenth, there will be a BOCC adoption public hearing. For staff's consistency review, the transportation element Goal One and future land use element Goal are used here to represent all of the goals, objectives, and policies of the transportation element and future land use element for space constraints. But staff did find the proposed Mobility Section consistent with the transportation element as well as the future land use element. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission find HCCPA twenty one sixteen consistent with the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County, and forward this recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, along with my co-lead Rich. County staff is also on the call tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. We have one citizen sign up for comment on this item twenty one sixteen. I have Jean Strohmeyer. Jean Strohmeyer is on the line.
She is off the line, but Jean, can you hear us?
Your mic is muted.
Jean, I'm gonna try not mute you. Jean, can you hear? Jean Strohmeyer. I did unmute her, but she is not speaking.
All righty. Move on then. Going once, going twice. All right. Let me see if we have anyone else sign up here. In the meantime, no, that was the only one I have on my list. So with that, then I will give it back to Ms. Corcoran. Want to do any rebuttal of any sort? I mean, our process.
None at this time, given that there was no comment.
Thank you very much. Turning it over to the Commissioners for questions or comments on this item. Yes, Mr. Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With, like a lot of these new additions that were put in here, I guess I just didn't know if maybe objective seven point three might cover what I'm about to bring up. But let's just say that you have a road that was planned for a certain amount of traffic, but then as, you know, time goes on, you know, that road becomes even more highly used. And I'm just using like an example of Cleveland. I have to take my kids to school right over there. And, you know, when I'm dropping from one and I'm having to, you know, cut through some of the neighborhoods to try to get through, if you are traveling, you know, Platte, and you go into Pacwood, and you're trying to cross Cleveland, you know, there are parking spaces that are right there on the street. And I'm sure at one point in time, those were a really good idea because they needed it. But now with the amount of traffic flow that is there, specifically in the morning time and the afternoon time, probably not much during the day, you're trying to cross to go towards Kennedy, you're gonna die. Like, I can't tell you how many accidents I've seen there, or I've almost been, you know, hit. So as, you know, traffic continues, you know, to evolve, what objective, like four point three, excuse me, not four point three, but like objective seven point three, you know, have the city or the county, you know, look at, you know, these parking, parking spaces or similar things that are obstructing, you know, views. So that way we make travel more safe.
Um, well, I think there are probably a couple of things in here that would speak to the issues of safety, the railways, and but ultimately, the county's Land Development Code or Transportation Technical Manual would have specifics of like the distance from the intersection that you need to have so that you have clear lines of sight at the intersections and things of, that's really the detail that needs to be followed to make sure that that's a safe condition. But I do think in addition to that, the objective you mentioned, some of the uh, information, policies in the section on Vision Zero and the safety would also apply to trying to ensure that that condition is, is that dangerous situation is rectified.
So, so, okay. So when the, when these situations come up, and I'm sure there's other ones, this is just one that I know of because I deal with them on a daily basis.
Right.
What's the, what, what's gonna be the process of getting that, you know, corrected? Is it the public having to make complaints or, or is there a government body that's going out and figuring out where these new issues are? Is this, this is giving us the authority to do that, or, you know, agency the ability to do that?
Well, I don't think that the Planning Commission is the agency that would be in the position to do that. I think what we would probably, it's a combination of things. One, the regulations when they're building something new should be putting in place the right safety precautions. But of course, they never probably anticipate everything or every circumstance that might arise. And that's where it, it's kind of different in every circumstance. I can think of one out by me where the business owners approached the county and said, hey, how we designed, how this was originally designed didn't work? Let's sit down together and look at the manuals and redesign this. There have been, I'm sure there are instances where the public has had an outcry and brought that to the city or county's attention. So it kind of depends on the situation a little bit. But ultimately, it would be county staff, who, Public Works, probably who would be alerted first to the situation and get involved, see who all needs to be involved in making modifications.
Thank you.
Questions on this item or discussion, comments from the Commissioners on this item? I just wanted to say for my own part, also it takes some time. This has been a process, and I wanted to commend you, Katrina, and also Rich, on the work you've done on this. This document has changed a lot as different things have been happening throughout this year. And the Planning Commission, this document has had to sort of react to it as the rest of the comp plan sections coming forward after this will have to also. You've done a good job adapting to it and bringing in all different parts of the county, getting a lot of different stakeholder input from a lot of different agencies, a lot of time, a lot of different agencies, and people who don't always work well together or haven't worked well together in the past. So I definitely wanted to commend you on that. I think the document shows that kind of broad view of inputs from a lot of different people around and looking for any more comments or questions around the room. Let me make sure Commissioner Anderson doesn't have her hand raised with some really important information on the line and see it. So with that, I'll go ahead and close public comment and open it up to the Commissioners for motions on this item. Commissioner Moreno.
I move that we find the proposed text language for Hillsborough County CPA twenty one dash sixteen, assist to the future of Hillsborough County, Hillsborough County Public Works, the four county commissioners.
And consistency finding, motion by Commissioner Moreno, second by Commissioner Linkus. Sorry, that properly. There any more discussion of this item? How much of the Commissioners seen done? I'll ask the clerk to do a roll call vote on this item.
Bernstein.
Yes.
Cardenas.
Yes.
Dix.
Yes.
Andy.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Linkus.
Yes.
Moreno.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Joseph.
No.
Motion carried eight to one. Chair Joseph voted no.
Thank you. All right. That was our last item up. So we'll thank you, Katrina, Rich, for your information. And we will go ahead and adjourn the Hillsborough County Public Hearing and open up the City of Tampa Public Hearing. If you will bear with me just a moment while I read this in. Welcome everyone to the November eighth, twenty twenty one, public hearings of the Planning Commission on the City of Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendments. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation is encouraged. Minimize feedback in the audio. All participants in the meeting will be muted until it is their opportunity to speak. Planning Commissioners should raise their hand or unmute themselves and turn on their camera to indicate that they would like to speak. Please be sure to state your name at the beginning of your remarks for the benefit of the clerk. There will be an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments. When your name is called, you will be unmuted when it is your turn to speak. Please wait until the chair calls on you to begin speaking. State your name at the beginning of your comments and adhere to time limits. If anyone has difficulties or is watching via HTV and would like to provide comments to be included in the record for the local government hearing, please email them to planner@plancom.org. That's planner@plancom.org. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a fifteen minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a fifteen minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three minute period for rebuttal response. Planning Commissioners will then ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, a second and discussion of vote will be taken. With that, I would like to ask the clerk to please call roll.
Good evening Bernstein.
Here.
Cardenas.
Here.
Dickerson. Dickerson.
Here.
Dix.
Here.
Andy.
Here.
Chris.
Here.
Linkus.
Here.
Moreno.
Here.
Powell.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Joseph.
Here.
Thank you. You have a call.
Thank you. All right. Our first item up for action is TACPA twenty one dash nineteen, Comprehensive Plan Amendment, seven twenty West Columbia Drive, Columbus, sorry, Columbus Drive. The presenter is Jennifer Malone.
Jennifer Malone, with your Planning Commission staff. I'm here to present on twenty one dash nineteen, the Tampa Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, located at seven twenty West Columbus Drive. This is in the central Tampa Planning District as well as the Ridgewood Park neighborhood. I have an aerial of the subject site is on the southern portion of West Columbus Drive, very close to the intersection of West Columbus Drive and North Boulevard to the north of the site. This is a gas station and some support uses, like a restaurant, and I think Taekwondo School. To the east is another commercial use on the corner. The, to the east of the site, but on the southern side of West Columbus Drive, that's a vacant structure. And then further east, we have the Woven Water Brewing Company. To the south of the subject site are the single-family detached residential. The request before you is privately initiated, is small scale from, it's approximately zero point three six acres from Residential ten to Residential twenty. And we're gonna take a little tour of the site with some site pictures. So this, the subject site, and we're facing east, looking at that vacant structure. This is West Columbus Drive facing east. The subject site was kind of behind me, and then you can kind of see a little bit of it on the left or right portion of the screen. So we're looking into the intersection of West Columbus North Boulevard. Here, we are looking at the subject site facing northeast. Uh, there's two alleys actually that are on either side of the subject site. So this is the alley to the south of the subject site, and we're about to drive, drive into it. And then here's that single-family detached residential to the south of the subject site. So when I was taking this picture, the subject site was behind me. Um, here's the adopted future land use. The, the subject site is Residential ten. Um, to the north, we have, and to the east, we have the community mixed use thirty-five. That's the pink color that allows some commercial uses. Um, to the south of the site, to the southeast, the darker brown is Residential thirty-five, which allows some higher density multifamily residential uses. The lighter brown to the northeast is Residential twenty. The blue color is public semi-public. That's actually the Villa Madonna School, which is in the area. And the green is recreational open space. That is the Phillips Park, which came before you as part of the park project this year. On the, to the south of the subject site, we see West Amelia Avenue. Um, that's kind of where we were at when I was taking some of those site pictures of the surrounding neighbor, the surrounding single-family detached residential. And then this is the proposed future land use map of Residential twenty on the site. This would increase the potential of dwelling units from three to seven. It would also increase the potential for non-residential square footage from approximately five thousand four hundred and eighty-eight square feet to about seven thousand eight hundred and forty square feet of non-residential. So ultimately, it would allow additional dwelling units on the site and greater intensity of non-residential uses. The locational criteria to have any non-residential on the site would also change, and it becomes a little bit more expansive under the Residential twenty future land use designation. So the Planning Commission staff reviewed this and found that it was consistent with several areas of the Comprehensive Plan. Um, the Comprehensive Plan recognizes that the city's population is going to continue to grow, and that while this is happening, housing opportunities really need to be created to meet the needs of the present and future population, ideally utilizing vacant or infill or underutilized land. So this is a vacant piece of land that is before you, and which the Comprehensive Plan encourages. And as the city becomes increasingly developed, the Comprehensive Plan also encourages that we target growth areas in the city with existing infrastructure that are served by employment opportunities and transit. So the site is in a unique area of the city where it's along a transit emphasis corridor. That's West Columbus Drive. It, yes, West Columbus Drive. Um, the Armature Works Development, which is a entertainment and retail center, is only a twelve-minute walk to the south of the subject site. And it's within proximity of, it's not very far from the Central Business District, which is a big employment area of the city. Um, another point of consistency is that the Comprehensive Plan seeks to provide those sensitive transitions of density. The proposed Residential twenty would provide that logical transition from West Columbus Drive to the single-family detached neighborhood to the south. And current, further, the site currently interfaces and is adjacent to a land use that is higher than what they are asking for today, that community mixed use thirty-five to the east. a land use that is higher than what they are asking for today. That community mixed use thirty-five to the east and north of it. So with that, uh, staff found this consistent with the comprehensive plan. Um, I should also mention that the City of Tampa is on the line, but they had no objection to this request. And I know the applicant is here as well. I'm available for any questions.
The applicant have a presentation or?
Oh, John, we, we can't hear you. Oh, no.
Uh, John, I'm, I'm trying to finish my question. You are unmuted.
Okay, there you go. Can you hear me now?
Yes, there you go.
Okay, there. I thought it was me. I had problems earlier. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, Chairman and, and members of the uh, Planning Commission. Uh, Jennifer made an excellent presentation and I, uh, I, I know you have a copy of the complete report with the uh, map series, the staff reports and the uh, uh, consistency analysis for the goals, objectives and policies of the comp plan. I uh, am John LaRoca, one oh one East Kennedy Boulevard. I'm the agent for the applicant Mid Century Holdings LLC. The applicant acquired the property uh, before I was engaged to assist with the uh, potential for increasing the land use uh, designation. Uh, the property is designated PD with three townhouse units on the property. Uh, as a planner and at studying the area as was uh, presented in Jennifer's report, the area across the street to the north is community mixed use thirty-five. Uh, property to the east is community mixed use on all four corners. This property is just off the corner of, of Boulevard. Both Boulevard and West Columbus Drive are arterial uh, uh, road networks. Uh, it seemed appropriate that this particular property uh, could be considered or should be considered uh, with a, a, a higher density to, or potential density to uh, be compatible with all the goals, objectives and policies of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan twenty forty, as mentioned in the report. Um, the, the, the devil is always in the details and I think you also have uh, or has been presented to you. I'm aware of three uh, comments or written comments that have been provided to you uh, from the Tampa Heights Civic Association Land Use Committee. Brian Seal offered comment. The Ridge Stacy Warden with uh, Ridgewood Park Crime Prevention and uh, Civic Association and two neighbors directly to the west on Glenwood, Tony Monk and Megan Etui uh, all commented. And it was my interpretation that those objections uh, there, there were comments and concern about future development, but there wasn't necessarily objection to the land use plan proposal, but to the details of what might be proposed in zoning. I've had and I, 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 I think the uh, the, the concerns that are raised are very thoughtful. I've discussed that with the, my client, the owner of the property. And we will look at that before we proceed with zoning. We have not attempted to run zoning concurrent with this request. Uh, we are simply here seeking approval to justify the residential twenty as being consistent and appropriate at that location. Uh, there may be some opportunity for uh, a, some assemblage of property in that area that might uh, steer how this site is designed and developed in the future. I think if I may summarize here by simply requesting that you uh, consider the, all of the commentary provided in your report, the consistency analysis that was done uh, and presented to you and the recommendation from staff. And I respectfully request your support of that. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. All right, we had two people sign up in the public comment section for this item. Uh, we will start with Tyler Hudson.
Yes.
Oh, we have no one signed up for nineteen. Sorry, I'm jumping again.
Right, we did get the, we did get some written comments in the right, you see.
Okay. Right. All right, so seeing that there's no one signed up for public comments, I will go ahead and turn it over to the commissioners for questions or comments or discussion on this item.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Rust.
I'll just um, pick up on what Ms. LaRoca said, recognizing the, the the public comments. I felt that they were very valid and I'm, I'm glad to hear that he and his client will kind of work through that and maybe work with it further. But I guess I'd agree that, you know, our purview is, is this consistent with comprehensive plan or not.
All right. Comments or? Yes, Commissioner Handy?
Um, I also, I, I'm very familiar with this area. It's my old neighborhood and I, I think that the um, the Tampa Heights Civic Association and, and the other group bring up some really valid points. Um, and then, and then even looking at the, the land use map, um, it, it, it kind of sticks out like a sore thumb. It's higher density than the surrounding residential and it's not the mixed use that is further east. And I think there, I, I agree with these folks that there would be a huge lost opportunity if this just became more townhomes, more residential, when that area is actually turning around and could serve as a walkable commercial. Uh, it would be a terrific opportunity to serve the neighborhood. So um, I you know, I would be, I would the Civic Association on, on this, that I don't think that more is appropriate in that spot.
Comments, Mr. Commissioner Moreno?
Thank you. Um, I guess I have a question for staff, um, Ms. Malone. Um, the, the, the um, commercial that is on Columbus between, I guess, between North Boulevard and I guess would be Massachusetts, on the north side of the street there, uh, that's bisected by Woodrow. Is it, that, that's R twenty right now, correct?
Um, I believe I'm gonna, is it okay if I share my screen? Again, and I can help answer that? Just, um.
Yes, I guess I'm trying to figure out the, the, so that, that block for, for two blocks, Boulevard and Columbus, uh, from, and Columbus to um, Massachusetts. Um, that commercial on the north side is R twenty and the south side is.
This, uh, so the pink is community mixed use thirty-five.
Mm-hmm.
So that allows for that mixture of uses and then um, to the east is the residential ten. So this is all uh, the single-family detached.
Yeah, okay, so what, what I'm saying is, so that, that group of, of pink there to the east of North Boulevard, that, that um, CMU thirty-five has R twenty north of it and R thirty-five south of it, right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I can show an aerial too, if you'd like.
Right.
Perfect, thank you.
No problem.
There any more questions or discussions with commissioners on this item? Hand raised and seeing no more action in the room, I'll go on ahead and close public comments and open it up to motions from the commissioners on this item, Commissioner Powell.
I think it's all chair.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Commissioner Cardenas, sorry.
Yeah, I'll be uh, recusing myself on this because I assisted the applicant in Century Holdings previously in selling the property. And uh, I may do so in the future, so.
Okay, have you gotten the paperwork to the clerk and every?
Yes.
All right, cool. All right, Commissioner Powell.
I'd like to make a motion that we find the proposed future land use designation change CPA twenty-one oh nine from residential ten to residential twenty consistent with matching twenty forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan for this recommendation to the city.
Yeah, motion of consistency finding, Commissioner Powell, a second by Commissioner Bernstein.
Yes.
Is there any more discussion of this item, other commissioners? Seeing now, I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and do a roll call, though.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Dix?
Yes.
Andy?
No.
Cress?
Yes.
Linkus?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to one. Commissioner Handy voted no and Commissioner Cardenas abstained.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for the information. Moving on to our next item, it is T A C P A twenty-one twenty Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment. Tampa Park Property North, the presenter is David Haye.
Good afternoon, uh, Commissioners, David Haye with your Planning Commission staff. The next item for your review is uh, T A C P A twenty-one twenty. We're referencing it as the Tampa Park Property North. The general location, it is located approx- uh, roughly uh, northeast of downtown Tampa. It is located within the central Tampa Planning District. More specifically, it falls within the historic Ebor uh, neighborhood. Uh, also is located uh, within the uh, Central Park Urban Village, which uh, is predominantly um, contains the Encore Development. Here we have an aerial of the subject site. You could see uh, it is outlined in red here in the center. We have Nuccio Parkway along the east. Along the west side is Scott Street. Uh, further to the west, this is uh, BT Washington Elementary School. You also have the Saunders Library. There's a church over here um, to the nor- and if we keep going uh, west, you, this is uh, the GTE Building and then you can see uh, down here, this is the Encore Development uh, located to the southwest and then of course Interstate two seventy-five. To the north, you have the Kforce uh, complex, the former Kforce Complex. There's the um, Tico Building directly to the north across from another property. And then uh, to the northeast, you have, this is the uh, Tico um, Streetcar Line uh, Barn where they store the uh, streetcars and then you could see um, Ebor City uh, further to the northeast. This dotted line that you see, this is the boundaries of this local, the Ebor Local Historic District. And then of course, you can see further south, this is the Leroy Salmon Crosstown Expressway. So a little background, the site, it, it is um, privately initiated, is small scale. It's approximately five point one nine acres in size. The current future land use designation is community mixed use thirty-five, the CMU thirty-five. And the applicant is looking to go to the urban mixed use sixty uh, future land use category. I will take a little tour around the site. Here we're looking north of Nuccio Parkway. So this is the subject site. We're looking toward Ebor. This is the Masonite building that was just opened um, either yesterday or this morning. Um, and then this is the curve that you get up to uh, Palm and Seventh. Here we're looking northeast up Scott Street. So now the subject site is over here on the right uh, behind this chain length fence. And then this is uh, the grounds of BT Washington Elementary uh, over on the left side. Here we're looking west down east Estelle Street. Uh, so the subject site, even though these are part of the Tampa Park Apartments, these uh, this portion of the Tampa Park Apartments is not part of the amendment. It is actually uh, behind the photographer in this picture. Now we kind of pivot a little. We're still at the intersection of east Estelle Street and uh, Scott Street. Now we're looking toward uh, BT Washington Elementary. And then you could see the skyline for uh, downtown uh, in the background. And again, now we're turning around. We're in the same location. Now we're looking east toward the subject site. Again, from that same intersection on the uh, west side of the property. Uh, we're, you know, past these buildings is Ebor uh, City. So here we have the currently adopted future land use map. There's a lot of pink and reds on this uh, map. So I'm gonna try to describe uh, all this, the subject site and all the properties, south of Palm, uh, west of Nuccio, east of Nebraska, except of course for the park, are all in this community uh, mixed use thirty-five future land use category. This is rec open space uh, here. Uh, if you go uh, northeast into uh, historic Ebor, Seventh Avenue, all that is already the urban mixed use sixty future land use category, the same category that the applicant is seeking on their site. Uh, directly to the east of the site in the bright red, that's that community commercial thirty-five. Um, further south into Ebor, uh, there are some community mixed use thirty-five. There's also some uh, general mixed use uh, twenty-four. Ran out of space on the legend here. Um, to the uh, southeast in this purplish color and then over to um, Channel Side and Channel District. That's all the regional mixed use one hundred. So that's the most intensive land use category outside of downtown. You can also see it over here where Encore is. Encore is under that regional mixed use one hundred. Um, there is some remaining um, heavy industrial uses, some remnant parcels still within the Channel District. Um, this light industrial, this light gray, this is actually the Trax and Union Station. It's right here. And then there's uh, where that GT Credit Union building that we saw in the aerial on the west side of Nebraska, that is also in the urban mixed use sixty future land use category. So this, this area is some uh, sandwiched between two areas that are already the urban mixed use sixty. So if this plan amendment is uh, finally adopted, the subject site would go to the uh, that urban mixed use sixty future land use category, similar to what can be found again to the northeast. All right, um, currently under the uh, existing CMU thirty-five, the site can be considered for a hundred and one, uh, excuse me, a hundred and eighty-one dwelling units or a maximum of four hundred fifty-two thousand square feet approximately of residential or non-residential use. So uh, if you remember, um, in the central Tampa Planning District uh, under the CMU, uh, and also under the UMU, the cat- the, the square footage can be used um, and can be interchanging, interchanged between residential or non-residential. So, under the potential urban mixed use sixty, the site could be uh, considered for a maximum of three hundred and eleven dwelling units or a maximum of seven hundred and thirty-four thousand square feet. Again, could either be mixed use, it could just be residential, or it could be just non-residential uses. Uh, the proposed amendment would allow for additional density and intensity and would introduce the possibility of the RM thirty-five, the RM fifty and the CI zoning districts. That's within the small portion on the south side that's not within the local historic district. The portion that's within the local historic district, it would allow a consideration for the YC six zoning district. Next? Question. Uh, next, as usual, we have submitted the request to our partner agencies for their review and input. All of the comments are included in your packet for your review. We did receive a comment from Hillsborough County Schools stating that Blake High School is projected to be over capacity at a hundred and one percent. In these cases, state law requires the school district to take capacity in adjacent concurrency service areas, example, school attendance boundaries, into account during development review. At this time, additional capacity exists in adjacent concurrency service areas at the high school level. Please note that the school board at this stage only provides an analysis for adequate facilities and is, it is not a determination of school concurrency. A school concurrency review will be issued prior to preliminary plat- or site plan approval. Uh, Planning Commission staff uh, reviewed the comprehensive plan and found that the proposed map amendment request for the urban mixed use sixty future land use category would be consistent with the adopted policy guidance uh, within the comprehensive plan. Uh, we found uh, three main areas of consistency. The comprehensive plan encourages new development to be sensitive. The comprehensive plan encourages new development to be sensitive to existing development in regards to scale amassing. The majority of the subject site is located in the Ebor Local Historic District. As such, any development is subject to review by the Barrio Latino Commission, which has specific standards for development that occurs within the district. Also, the U M U sixty future land use category is present in the district already, specifically to the northeast of the subject site along Seventh Avenue. Based on these findings, your staff found the request consistent with compatibility policies. Those are the land use policies one point two point three, five point one point four, and six point one point six. And policies related to the city's historic resources, and those policies are land use policies nineteen point one point one and nineteen point one point two. Third, or second, the city's overall growth management strategy is to promote residential infill in appropriate areas. The plan also seeks to target areas that are well-served by infrastructure or that have opportunities for additional expansion of existing utilities at minimal cost. Due to the subject site's proximity to the urban core, additional infill may be appropriate in this general area. Finally, the city's plan promotes mixed use development in areas with access to employment and transit service. The subject site is ideally situated with proximity to five separate part local bus routes, the Tico Streetcar Line, and Amtrak intercity rail service based out of Union Station. The site, as stated previously, is located between two major activity centers being downtown Tampa and Ebor City. So based on those findings, it should not come to a surprise to you all that the Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine Twenty Forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan. That concludes my presentation. Both myself and city staff is available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our left is the applicant. Have a presentation?
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. Tyler Hudson, four hundred North Ashley Drive. In deference to David's very thorough presentation and out of respect to the fellow travelers on the agenda, I'm going to be very brief, but if I could share my screen, that would be great. You all see my screen?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So this project relates to the Gas Works projects that I've had the pleasure being before you all a couple of times on, and there's a lot of colors going on here. I just want to give some context about what, what we're talking about and how this fits into, into a larger picture. We're talking about the parcels that are in green there at the north end of what used to be the Tampa Park Apartments complex. You may have noticed that just on the other side of the parcel up front, Seventh Avenue, wasn't included in the amendment, and that, that's because the developer group, Daryl Shaw and Keller, doesn't own that. So we are only seeking in this application to amend the future land use of the parcels we actually own and control. The blue that you see on screen is sort of the maximal boundary of the Gas Works Master Plan, which is the subject of a P D A rezoning that will go before the Tampa City Council earlier, next, early next year. The red line, as you can see, is the historic district, which has some obvious significance that I'll talk about in just a second. Again, there's the two parcels that are before you here this evening. David did a great job, I think, walking through the, the colors from of this area, which is a little bit tough to unpack. As you can see, though, the, the area that's sandwiched between Nebraska on the west and Nuccio on the east has remained in its configuration of C M U thirty-five for some time, which I think the applicant feels, and I think staff agrees, is fairly low density, given this property's proximity to the Central Business District, as well as transit opportunities. Again, that's the second parcel we're talking about. The, the parcel I was talking about earlier is this one, one nine eight seven oh eight, that, that you guys can see where my cursor is going. Again, that, that is not part of the Gas Works project this time. At the Barrio Latino Commission, some folks inquired why that was excluded, and just to be clear, that, that's not a part of the project. I think David walked through clearly what the incremental increase is going to be. I think it's, this commission well knows. You see a lot of these. U M U sixty is the first incremental increase above C M U thirty-five. We're not seeking to leapfrog any other categories. This is really sort of the next category up. Obviously, appreciate staff support for this. I'd also note that this got a little bit out of, out of sync. The, the reason why you're seeing this now is it's going to go before City Council on December ninth in tandem with a P D rezoning application for these parcels, as well as one parcel to the south. So this actually already has gone before the Barrio Latino Commission, and they unanimously recommended approval of this plan amendment. One other facet of this that I think is interesting is that David alluded to this project, this parcel being in the Central Park Urban Village. It's in the Central Park Urban Village because it's in the Central Park C R A, and fifteen years ago, the Central Park C R A adopted a plan that in the very last page of their plan shows what they wanted the future land use to be then, in two thousand and six, and you'll note that it was, it was U M U sixty. And they recommended a really significant increase in density for this area, I think, for fairly obvious reasons, given, given its location. And that's exactly what we're asking for. We're, we're not asking for R M U hundred. That's out of respect for the historic district. The parcels that are before you this evening are in the historic district, and there are no parcels in the historic district that are greater than U M U sixty, and so we want to be really mindful of that, given that the historic district line cuts right through the very middle of our project. And one final note, in the comprehensive plan, does note that there is this emergent quote, "south Ebor City" area. That's a little bit undefined, and that, that's what we're so excited to, to, to bring to life, I think, speaking for Keller and Daryl, and the next, next several years to come. And just so you know, this is not part of tonight's application, to be very clear, but there is a pending comp plan amendment to deal with the parcels that are, that are on screen. Because of the, because of the timing and the blessings of Tallahassee interpretations with respect to the private property rights element, th- those parcels had to get broken out of the original application, and those are going to come before you earlier next year. But just again, in the, in the interest of transparency and in context, we are going to be bringing before you a map amendment for these parcels that are outside the historic district, and the proposal for those will be for R M U one hundred. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, and I appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you, sir. All right. We have two people sign up in the public comment for this item. One of them is obviously, well, maybe not, might be a different Tyler Hudson. So I'll start with Tyler Hudson, just in case.
And I think that's the same one, unless I've been close, so.
All right. Then we will move on to our second person sign up, Graham Tyrell. Graham with us?
Yes.
Grant is up. Sorry, Graham, you want to speak?
Sure. No, I don't really have anything to add to Tyler's comments there. My name is Graham Tyrell with Kettler, so I represent the applicant. And I think the two presentations have covered very well what we're hoping to do. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Tyrell. All right. Those are the only two people to sign up on this item. So with that, I will turn it over to go up, I mean, offer a rebuttal period to Mr. Hudson, just in case.
Thanks for your consideration. Look forward to answering any questions you might have.
Thank you, sir. At this, this time, we will turn it over to the Commissioners for questions, comments, discussion on this item. Not seeing any in the room, or Commissioner Dickerson with her hands up on the line. I'll then close public comment and open it up to motions. Yes, Commissioner Bernstein.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I would move that we find City of Tampa C P A twenty-one dash twenty, consistent with the goals, policies, and objectives of the Imagine Twenty Forty Tampa Townhouse and Plan, pass that recommendation along to Tampa City Council.
Second.
All right. I have a motion for consistency finding by Commissioner Bernstein, a second to that motion by Commissioner Marino. Is there any more discussion from the Planning Commissioners on this item? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to do a roll call vote on this item.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Dix?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Linkus?
Yes.
Marino?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carried nine to zero.
Thank you. All right. On to our next item, two C, T A, T A C P A twenty-one dash twenty-two, future land use map amendment, forty-five ten South Manhattan Avenue. And the presenter is Danny Collins.
Good evening, everybody. This is Danny Collins with your Planning Commission staff. This is T A C P A twenty-one twenty-two. It's for the property located at forty-five ten South Manhattan Avenue. The subject site is located in the South Tampa Planning District. It's within the Fair Oaks Manhattan neighborhood. Portions of the site are within the coastal hazard area, and it's shown here on our locational map. Just a quick background of the request. This is a privately initiated amendment at small scale and size. The total subject site is approximately two point two acres. The request is to change the future land use from the public semi-public designation to the community mixed use thirty-five and residential ten future land use designations. Here is an aerial map of the subject site and the surrounding properties. The subject site's outlined in this black color. It's just south of the intersection of West Fair Oaks Avenue and South Manhattan Avenue. There are single-family detached residential uses directly to the north of the subject site on West Fair Oaks Avenue. There are some parcels that are recognized under the public semi-public designation to the east and south. And those parcels are, some of those parcels are being used by Impact Academy South to the east, and then to the southeast, Saint Patrick's Catholic Church. To the west of the subject site are non-residential uses. There is a hospital towards the south, South Manhattan Avenue, and there is a medical office to the east, and then there is also a church directly to the east of the subject site. Here is an image looking east at the subject site from South Manhattan Avenue. Here is an image looking north at the subject site from the property just to the south of the site. This is looking north on South Manhattan Avenue. The subject site is on our right. This is looking south on South Manhattan Avenue. The subject site is on our left. Here's an example of some of the detached single-family residential uses on West Fair Oaks Avenue to the north of the site. And here is an image looking southwest of the subject site toward the northeastern portion of the subject site. Here is the adopted future land use map. The subject site's outlined in this black color. It's currently recognized under the public semi-public designation. That public semi-public designation is to the south and east of the subject site. It is important to note, this is, though it is publicly recognized under a public semi-public designation, it's under private ownership. To the north of the subject sites are parcels recognized under the C M U thirty-five designation. And then to the east, northeast of the subject site are parcels recognized under the residential ten designation. There are predominantly parcels recognized under the C M U thirty-five directly to the west of the subject site on South Manhattan Avenue. And this line here picks the boundaries of the coastal hazard area. Here is the proposed future land use map. The applicant is requesting the eastern portion of the site approximately one acre to be designated residential ten. The remaining one point two acres to the west, western portion of the site is being composed under the C M U thirty-five designation. Currently, under the public semi-public designation, the maximum density intensity cannot be defined because there is not a cap on F A R or density under the public semi-public designation. Those are determined, the, the density intensity is determined by the surrounding development pattern, and therefore it's not defined at this time. As proposed, under the residential ten C M U thirty-five designation, the site can be considered for fifty-two dwelling units or just under a hundred and twenty thousand square feet of non-residential development. The amendment would allow for residential, commercial, or mixed uses that cannot be considered under the public semi-public future land use designations. I do want to note that portions of the site that are being proposed under the C M U thirty-five may utilize F A R for resident, for residential development. Planning Commission staff reviewed the request and found it consistent with several sections of the comprehensive plan. Their request was found consistent with the livable city section by providing diverse housing opportunities and proximity to transit in the South Tampa Planning District. The request is also consistent with the city design policies by promoting a range of uses and proximity to each other. Planning make, Planning Commission reviewed it, found it consistent with the overall residential development policies of the plan by promoting a development pattern that is sensitive and compatible, compatible to the affected neighborhood. The proposed R ten designation on the eastern portion of the site will provide a transition from the C M U thirty-five uses that are being proposed on the western portion of the site, minimizing the impact to the residential ten designated parcels to the north on West Fair Oaks Avenue. Finally, the piece, the Planning Commission staff reviewed the request for consistency with the coastal management policies. Since the site is currently recognized under the public semi-public designation, and there's currently not a cap, we cannot determine the density that can be considered under that category. Planning Commission staff is not able to determine if the request would cause that increase in density within this coastal hazard area. Furthermore, the portions of the site within the coastal hazard area are zoned commercial general. The C M U thirty-five designation is the least intensive category that is consistent with the commercial general zoning district. Based on those considerations, the Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine Twenty Forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Does the applicant have a presentation?
Yes.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Rebecca Kurt. I'm of council with Brooks, Shepherd, and Rocha, four oh one Tampa Street, and we are representing Lennar Homes on this infill townhome project. Also online is Michael Brooks with my firm. Parker Hirons with Lennar is monitoring the presentation, and we have planners from ClearView. So when you go to public comment, most of those people will probably be from our team. I did want to point out that from the time that you were originally briefed on this project, we have amended our request, and we have added res ten on the eastern portion of our property. We believe this is more sensitive to the single-family homes that are adjacent to the north of this. We also have an accompanying rezoning pending before City Council that will run along with this comprehensive plan amendment for twenty-four townhome units. We are adjacent to an existing transit stop. We have sidewalks on both sides of Manhattan and bike lanes on Manhattan, which we think is so helpful for this urban infill project. We are surrounded by a mix of uses, as your staff report indicated, and we believe that we're the perfect transition from commercial and single-family to the north to the four and five-story apartment complex that's to our south. We, I do want to say thank you to staff. They had a couple meetings with us, and we really appreciated their input on our project and working with us. And we, our project is comparable and compatible with the surrounding area, and it is consistent with the goals and objectives of the, of the comprehensive plan, as indicated in your expert staff report. We're super excited about this project, and we respectfully request a positive recommendation from you. I'm available if there are any questions.
Thank you. All right. We have three people to sign up for this one, but some of these names look familiar. I'll run through them anyway. First up is Parker Hirons. Is Parker Hirons on the line? No. Not seeing him. All right. We will move on to Chelsea Hardy. Is Chelsea Hardy on the line? All right. We will move on to Michael Brooks. Do you see Michael Brooks as a member of the?
Yeah, no additional comments, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Those were the only three names we had sign up for a public comment, so I will turn it back over to the applicant. If you would like to do a rebuttal after minutes.
We have nothing further. We just respectfully request your positive recommendation. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. With that, I will turn it over to the Commissioners for comments or questions on this item, discussion. Not seeing any hands in the room or any hands being raised online. I'll go. I'll go ahead and close the public comment on this item and open it up to motions from the commissioners. Commissioner Marino?
I, I move that we find proposed future land use designation change for City of Tampa CPA twenty-one dash twenty-two for public semi-public community mixed-use thirty-five and residential ten consistent with the Imagine twenty forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan as far as recognition to Tampa City Council.
Second.
Consistency finding by Commissioner Marino. That was a second whisper by Commissioner Powell in my ear. All right, there any more discussion on these items from the commissioners? Seeing none, no hands online. I'll ask the clerk to do a roll call vote on this item. Bernstein?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Dix?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Linkus?
Yes.
Marino?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carried nine to zero. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. All right, next up, we have TA CPA twenty-one dash twenty-three Comprehensive Plan text amendment, coastal high hazard area. The presenter is Sean College.
Good evening, Commissioners. Sean College Planning Commission staff. I'll share my screen. Should be seeing my screen. Now, hang one second. Now you should be seeing my screen.
Yes, sir.
This is Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendment. It's a text amendment, twenty-one dash twenty-three. Coastal high hazard area is the subject matter. It is a publicly initiated plan amendment. Recently, the state updated the coastal high hazard area. And this policy was identified by Planning Commission staff with Tampa staff as needing a clarification to make sure it was interpreted correctly according to state law. So it's an existing policy, but we're rewording it to emphasize and reference the state definition for coastal hazard that's in Florida statute as a clarification. In the consistency review, again, the effect of this plan amendment, of this text amendment, we believe clarifies the guiding coastal hazard area pursuant to Florida statute. Consistency review policies of the comprehensive plan for the city of Tampa, in particular, is coastal management policy one point one point one, which is the definition of the coastal high hazard area. And this new policy amendment would be consistent with that state definition. There were no objections from review agencies with regard to this text amendment. And staff recommends that the planning commission find this text amendment consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine twenty forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we had no one from the public sign up to comment on this one, so I will open it up to commissioners. Comments or questions on this item? Seeing none at this time, no hands raised online. I'll close the public comment and open it up to motions from the commissioners on the side. Commissioner Marino?
I move that we find TA CPA twenty-one dash twenty-three consistent with the Imagine twenty forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan and further recognition to Tampa City Council.
Consistency motion by Commissioner Marino, second by Commissioner Linkus. All right. There any more discussion on this item from the commissioners? And no hands online. I'll ask the clerk to do a roll call vote on this item. Bernstein?
Yeah.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Dix?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Linkus?
Yes.
Marino?
Yes.
Powell?
No.
Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carried eight to one. Commissioner Powell voted no. All right, thank you. Next item up, TA CPA twenty-one dash twenty-four Comprehensive Plan text amendment, coastal high hazard area maps update. And the presenter again is Mr. College.
Thank you. Once again, Sean College Planning Commission staff. I'll share my screen. This is a related MAP amendment to the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Again, it is publicly initiated. The state recently updated the coastal high hazard area. And as required by state law, the comprehensive plan needs to be updated to reflect the new coastal high hazard area. There's really no discretion at the local level with regard to what the coastal hazard area is. It is determined by the state pursuant to state law. And there are two maps in the Tampa Comprehensive Plan, the future land use map and the public access map that have this coastal hazard area on them, and those are the subjects for this update. On your screen are the two existing maps, future land use map and public access map that are being deleted and replaced. And now on your screen are again the updated maps that are replacing the maps that now have the new updated coastal high hazard area that is in effect now pursuant to state law. Consistency review with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Coastal management objective one point one, direct population concentrations away from the coastal hazard area. Again, it's essential and required by law that the comp plan reflect the utmost up-to-date coastal hazard area. So we are doing that in order to protect property and life and health. There were no objections from reviewing agency with regard to this update. And with that, staff recommends that you find these MAP amendments consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine twenty forty Comprehensive Plan. I can put some representation.
Thank you, sir. We have no one to sign up and public comment for this one either. So I will turn it over to the commissioners for questions, discussions, comments on this item. Seeing no one in the room and no hands online, I'll go ahead and close public comment and open it up to motions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I would move that we find TA CPA twenty-one dash twenty-four consistent with the goals, policies, and objectives of the Imagine twenty forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan pass that recommendation along to City Council.
Thank you.
All right, a motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Bernstein, a second to that motion by Commissioner Marino. Is there any more discussion from the commissioners? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to do a roll call vote on this item. Bernstein?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Dix?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Linkus?
Yes.
Marino?
Yeah.
Powell?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carried nine to zero. All right, thank you. That was our last item. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Everybody have a good night. This meeting's adjourned. Seven twenty-seven.